Thank you. All right, so. Why don't we start with roll call? Laura, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Goulden?
Here.
Commissioner Haskell?
Here.
Vice Chair Koffsel?
Here.
Chair Taylor?
Present.
And Commissioner Targ will not be present this evening. He is celebrating the Jewish holiday.
Thank you. All right, so with that, are there any oral communication? That the public, let me get my right, right screen up here so I can see. Is there anything that the public would like to say before the planning commission, before we move on to the regular agenda? All right, seeing no hands. Why don't we move on to the first agenda item? So it looks like Dylan, is that you up for that?
I am up for both items this evening, so I will go ahead and share my screen.
Excuse me.
You gotta stop playing the games while we're.
I know.
Yeah, no, that's search and rescue. There's a search up in Yosemite that I'm involved in, so that's what that was about. Sorry for the interrupt. All right, go ahead Dylan, please.
All right, I'll go ahead and share my screen. Okay. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
All right, is this the right item on the, the first item on the agenda, two forty-one and two eighty-one, Georgia?
It, it's not, I believe the first one was gonna be the wayside.
Okay. Get to that one. Okay. This should be the correct one.
There we go, yep.
Okay. All right, let me just go ahead and set up everything really quick. Okay. Okay, thank you Chair Taylor and members of the commission. And so this item is an architectural review, an architectural site development and lot line adjustment. A review of a new residence and lot merger on a vacant lot located at five thirty-one wayside. So because the scope of work entails a lot line adjustment. The planning commission is the final decision-making body for all three permit applications. The ASC has reviewed the architectural and site development review components of this proposal. And they have forwarded a recommendation of approval, which is subject to the conditions of approval described in exhibit C of the draft resolution. So just, staff wanted to just note that this presentation will cover both the proposed new residence and the lot merger. And so with that, staff will begin with the background of the site. And so the six point two four seven gross vacant site, which is the resultant of the three lot merger proposed. Is situated on the southerly side of Wayside Road and westerly of Short Street. Which is a dirt gravel street that only exists on town parcel maps, commonly referred to as a paper street. But is not paved or otherwise improved at this time. So the project's scope includes improvements to this paper street to meet both town and fire site access requirements. So the site's significant slope, the average slope is about twenty-three point three percent. And geotechnical constraints present challenges in development. And so the town ground movement potential map, which the excerpt is shown on the right-hand side. Designates the rear portion of the site as PB, which is this orange area. And PS, which is the yellow area, which are classified as areas with significant potential for down slope movement. The PS area, PS, the PS areas are potentially permissible for development, provided that the geologic data or. And/or engineering solutions are favorable. But generally, the PD areas are not developable. And then the front side of the site, the front portion of the site is designated as SLS, which is this brown area. And this designation is classified under the areas with relatively stable ground, which development is allowable. So now with just the site background discussed, staff is gonna shift gears a bit and we're gonna discuss the proposed lot merger. Oh, this is just showing the site in relation to Wayside Road and the three parcels. Okay, and so in nineteen seventy-seven, the town foreclosed on a property. On a property tax lien on the parcel, which is APN zero seven six, one nine three, one nine two, one three zero, which is the middle parcel. On this plat map on the right-hand side. And it was subsequently acquired by a grandee. So in nineteen eighty-five, a resident made a proposal to purchase the slot from the town. Which the town agreed and sold the property, subject to a deed restriction prohibiting development consistent with the town's. Geological map designation of moving deep or M lowercase d that was existing at the time. And so in twenty twelve, the planning commission approved a proposed map modification to the current SLS designation. But did not remove that deed restriction mentioned. And then subsequently, the current owners and applicants for tonight's proposal acquired this deed restricted parcel. And they also do own a five thousand square foot parcel on one side, which is the smaller parcel. The last three digits, one four zero, located northerly, if you're looking at this parcel map, to the subject parcel. And the larger five point nine acre parcel on the other side of this deed restricted parcel. And so in a component of the proposal tonight is that the applicant is requesting to merge all three of these parcels. The recent removal of the deed restriction by the town council at their August eleventh, twenty twenty-one meeting. Will now allow for the lot merger and development proposed tonight on this middle lot. The middle lot is flatter than the larger lots, the larger lot. And citing the house there, which is proposed, would result in less grading and sole removal. And so in change, just in exchange for this removal of the deed restriction. The, the parcel owners did grant the town an approximately twenty-three foot wide conservation easement. Which is over approximately ten thousand four hundred and thirty-six square feet. Area of the merged parcels rear portion. And because this is a private conservation, the applicant will be responsible for maintaining this property. This, this portion of the property. So now staff with the, the proposed merger discussed, staff is gonna now ship back to the new resident component of the project. And so here's an overview of the site plan with some development metrics. So the project proposes a minimal impervious surfaces. There's a new twelve thousand nine, nine, one thousand two hundred and ninety-seven square foot driveway, which is the area in yellow. Which will be designed in accordance with fire and town standards. The front entry and orange sidewalk way and rear patio areas, which are the both blue areas noted on site plan. Comprise, comprise the remainder, seven hundred and thirty-four square feet of the proposed impervious surfaces. And then the structure also does comply with the required setbacks and height requirements of the RE one A zoning district. And then there's just a note that the project does comply with the required covered parking as there's a two-car garage. But there is a, in recommended condition number six. That the guest parking was originally proposed within the driveway approach to this garage. That these guests parking are now either to be located at the end of the new driveway, which is the two triangles at the end here. I still haven't learned how to draw a car in clip art, I apologize. Or if there's an alternative location that the project team determines is practical and more feasible. That that should just be designed in compliance with town design standards and is to the satisfaction of the planning director. So staff just wanted to point out that that was a, the condition six to make the project compliant with town parking standards. And so now turning to the proposed floor plan, and then there's just some additional metrics here. So the proposed residence is a two-car, two-story residence with the attached two-car garage. So in total, the house is three thousand and sixty-five square feet. Which is well below the allowable five thousand seven hundred and forty-one square feet and overall. The overall allowable of the residence and then the overall site square footage maximum of six, six thousand seven hundred and fifty-five. And so just turning to the grading plan, staff just wants to note that there's minimal grading proposed. Particularly because it's being cited, the residence is being cited on that middle lot, which has a flatter topography. There is no building pad fill and the seventy-five cubic yards primarily is for site work cut. And then there is a hundred and five cubic yards of site work fill. This results in eighty cubic yards of being held off site. And so now just turning to some of the section and elevations, I'll go through these quickly. These are the front facade elevation and section. These are the left and right-hand side facades and elevations. And here is the rear facade and rear facade elevation and sections. And then lastly, the upper picture is an additional section of the rear interior of the house. And the lower picture is just that side cross-section. And here's some project renderings of the completed project. Here are the proposed exterior materials and colors. The project incorporates natural color palette and uses natural materials. For example, there are dark cedarwood panels in the garage door. Now turning to the lighting plan. So the proposed outdoor lighting plan did comply with the outdoor lighting policy. With the exception that there were two fixtures proposed for the second story rear and front terraces. ASC recommended in condition five, that the fixture quantity be reduced from two to one. Since town code only allows for one exterior light fixture per exterior person door. And so a two, a two-door patio sliding would not necessarily get you two fixtures. And then also that condition included installation of either motion or timer controls for the outdoor fixtures. And then this is just the proposed landscaping plan. Just in brief, the landscaping plan met the town code requirements, particularly with. We low calculations, in fact, it's all native plants and there's no proposed irrigation. And so we low calculations are not, not required for town code. And then staff just wants to note that the conservation committee was highly supportive of the proposal. And therefore, there were no changes that were needed to be made to the existing or the proposed landscaping plan as is. And so just turning to public comments, staff sent out notices on September the third. To neighbors within the three hundred feet radius of the project to notify them of tonight's meeting. Staff wanted to note that the homeowner also did conduct some neighbor outreach prior to the August twenty twenty-one, August the ninth, twenty twenty-one ASC meeting. And there were no comments received both at that meeting, either advance of it. There was one verbal comment received, which was in support of the project, particularly the landscaping and the fixtures. And then for tonight's meeting, there were no comments received in advance to provide in the packet or to, for it as a supplemental. And then just turning to that August the ninth review that ASC did. So the ASC considered the architectural and site development components. There are discussions centered around the parking, landscaping, exterior lighting. The deed restriction removal and lot merger implications primarily just towards the development. And then also just the improvements to that short street and the driveway access to the site. Overall, the ASC was very supportive of the project staff. Chair Ross noted that it was, quote, it was, it was a rare occasion that a project checks all boxes of the design guidelines, end quote. And so with that, the ASC moved to recommend approval of both. Permits subject to the conditions of approval that are described in exhibit C of the draft resolution. And that motion carried five oh. And then these are just the findings that the ASC made in order to recommend approval of the architectural and site development permits of the project. And so these findings were included in the draft resolution. Staff does know that the planning commission, if the planning commission determines that they disagree or otherwise cannot make any of the findings. Described in the draft resolution, it is permitted to impose and any additional conditions so that the findings may be met. And then these are just the design guidelines that were used by ASC to review the application. These are town code notes that these guidelines are consistent with the town code required findings, but are in greater detail. And these were. These three main aspects were what the ASC used to review it, and then they concluded obviously that it complied with the town's design guidelines. And so now I'm gonna shift gears back to the required findings for approval for the lot merger. And so the staff concludes that the project does comply with the requirements of the state subdivision map act. As it doesn't, it's between three adjoining parcels. It does not create additional parcels. The parcels, the parcel conforms to the town zoning and building ordinance, the resultant parcel. And staff is supporting approval of the adjustment as well as, yeah, the development of the site. And so these are the town required findings to approve the proposed lot merger. And so staff concludes that both sections seventeen point twelve point zero two zero and seventeen point zero four point zero four zero. Of the town code, those required findings can be made just based on, you know, the parcel, the resultant parcel is still compliant. With those RE one A zoning regulations. Particularly the minimum lot size setbacks, et cetera. That there, there are no utilities or easements adversely impacted by this merger. And it actually, the proposed merger results in the elimination of two non-conforming parcels within the zoning district, that ten thousand and five thousand that I mentioned previously. And then lastly, that merger will require a deed recordation to ensure that it, it carries through the life of the, the parcel. And then the, the merger of the three parcels does allow for citing of the residents on the flatter area. Of the site, and then this does result in the less grading and soil removal on site. Which ties into the lots designed for the purpose and design for what they're intended for of that section seventeen point zero four point zero four zero. And so staff concludes that the project conforms to the town code. The design guidelines and also the state subdivision map act. Both the new residence and the lot merger are exempt from sequel review based on the two sections indicated on the screen. And so therefore, staff does recommend that the planning commission adopt the draft resolution. Approving the architectural site development and lot line adjustment permits. Subject to the recommended conditions of approval described in exhibit C. And so this concludes staff's presentation and we're available for any questions.
Thank you Dylan. Commissioners, do you have any clarifying questions for Dylan? Go ahead Judith. You're, you're muted.
Thank you. In terms of the conservation easement, I just want a little more context from staff. Why? And I know the applicant will be maintaining it, but how common are these? Because I haven't personally run into this type of. Situation before, so any context would be helpful.
There are a number of places in town where there are conservation easements or open space easements. To maintain the open areas and the town values. They're often associated with some sort of subdivision action. Because there are sometimes trade-offs that happen when there's a subdivision. And so the area that they're proposing to build the house was previously not developable. And now with change, you know, in the, in the designation for geologic safety, now that we know that it's developable and appropriate to develop there. They're providing the conservation easement as a different area of the lot that would not be developable. And then the conservation easement is in an area that has a riparian corridor, and so it is much more desirable to be preserved in a conservation or open space state. So that's the intent of that.
And what was the? Area of the easement? I, I, it's probably in the materials, but could you remind me?
I believe it was a pretty equal exchange, so the conservation easement area was approximately equal. So if the applicant team feels otherwise, please correct me, but that was, I believe, the intent.
Did we see it on that map, one of the first ones Dylan showed? Where he showed the big lot and the five thousand and the ten thousand? I was curious where the conservation easement is. Yeah, where is it on that picture?
I believe it's roughly in this area, it follows the property.
Yeah, it follows that property line, and so it's set in from that property line across that bottom of the property.
I see, but you can't develop, there's an easement and a setback anyhow, right? You can't develop, is it bigger than that or then it, I guess, then any development has to be from that line rather than the property line?
Yeah, it preserves a little bit more than what the setbacks would otherwise preserve. And then it's even more limiting than what you could normally do in a setback area. So like an example is you can park.
I see.
Okay. In the setback area right now, right? And the conservation limits any kind of development of any structures or any uses in that area.
I see.
So. Unless there's more on that, I just had two other quick questions. In terms of the, the background in the packet, I, I do trust that there's no adverse impact on a utility or an easement. But is that documented in here or do we need to have any documentation? Or is it okay for the record to rely on your findings, so to speak?
We believe it's okay for the record because we think that the documents that go along with the lot line adjustment materials demonstrate that. And so sometimes when we would look at the lot line adjustment, we could visibly see an easement across the property. And so that would show us that there's something that could be in conflict. So the fact that the documents show that the site is free and clear of any easements is the documentation that we need.
And utilities, there is nothing on that piece of it to document or confirm.
I'm, I'm not aware, Dylan, do we have any further documentation on that? No, you know, we did all of our routine routing and review of the, of the project and nothing came up. So we would normally consider to be sufficient to make that finding.
Okay. And my last, oh, go ahead Dylan.
No, I was just gonna agree with what Laura said, that, that, that's my understanding as well, that. Any utility easements on the property are not being adversely affected by the, the merger or the development project itself.
Great, my last question is just on the resolution itself. And it, it, the whereas is talk about. There's authorized lot line adjustments without requiring a tentative map, parcel map or final map. If, and then presumably we're in that zone of not requiring it. What would the alternative have been? Because I wanna make sure I understand what we're. What, what, what the zone we're in is versus what would have been required otherwise.
Yeah, that's a great question. So in general, divisions of land are done through either a tentative subdivision map and a final map or a parcel map. If there are fewer parcels, so that is kind of the standard for changes to subdivision lot lines. So the general concept is that's generally how it's done. And then lot line adjustments and lot mergers are considered to be an exception to that normal process. And our code in the subdivision map act outline when that is possible. So this language reflects that this project meets those criteria for it to be an exception to a tentative map.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Other questions? Anne, no, John, no. So I had a couple of questions. Do we have any idea why the deed restriction wasn't removed before? Was that just an oversight or it just wasn't requested?
I don't know if we know for sure, the town attorney got into the very deep details of the deed restrictions. So the applicant may have more information, but I don't think that staff was able to identify that for sure in our, in our work.
Okay, and then the other question I had is, are we meaning the setbacks on short? On short street?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, okay, great. It was hard to tell because the map was, was small, so. Okay, given there are no other questions from the commissioners. Applicants, would you like to do any kind of presentation in addition to what the staff did? You're certainly welcome to speak at this point.
You know, no presentation, I, I think staff did a fantastic job of, of sort of presenting it concisely. I think the only thing I would add is to your question, you know, regarding the, why wasn't the deed restriction removed earlier? And it's just because, you know, it takes work and nobody took the effort to actually, you know, go through those steps is our understanding. Needed for anything in the past because nobody was trying to build a house there, so it just sort of stayed.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, then with that, are there any public comments on either staff's presentation or the applicant's comments?
There are two people calling in on the phone, if you're on the phone, press star nine to raise your hand.
And we have five attendees at the moment. All right, so seeing none, let me bring this back to the commission for discussion. So commissioners, somebody wanna start off?
I have no concerns on this, I'll be, I think the ASC has done a fine job. And I think the lot line adjustment and parcel merger makes perfect sense and turns into something better than was there before.
Okay, thank you. Anne, you got any comments?
Nope, same thing, seems like it makes sense. I like taking away the non-conforming lots by merging them into the others. And the development or proposed house seems good. Yeah, hard not to like it.
Great, Judith?
Yeah, I'm aligned with John and Anne on that.
Okay, great, and, and I am as well. I think that removing non-conforming lots is always a good thing. And, you know, I've been up by the property before and it seems like you guys are, you know, trying to do nice work. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
I'll, I'll take Judith tonight, just because I, I'll take you. Okay, great, so Laura, will you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Goulden?
Hi.
Commissioner Haskell?
Hi.
Vice Chair Koffsel?
Hi.
Chair Taylor?
Hi. Okay, great, so the resolution passes, congratulations. We certainly look forward to seeing your project move forward. Is there anything else on this agenda item Laura that you need?
No, that doesn't.
Okay, great.
Thank you commissioners, we appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, you bet, thank you all for attending tonight.
Good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Bye-bye. Bye bye.
All right, so moving on to the review, uh another lot line adjustment. Um, this is the two forty-one and two eighty-one Georgia Lane. And Dylan, it looks like you're up again.
All right, I'll go ahead and share my screen again.
Gotta be there somewhere.
It's like, which screen is it on?
I know, we saw it earlier, right? We know it's there.
Sorry. Okay, let's see. It's here, I promise. Dramatic suspense, that's all. All right, can everyone see my screen?
Yeah, that's great. If you could go full full screen, that would be nice.
Okay, so you can, you're seeing this screen and not the other one.
That's what I was. One with the with the slides, you know, the the slide and the notes at the side.
Yeah, that's what it's doing to me. Let me see. Let me see what I can do here. That was the same thing it was doing before. Okay. I don't know, I'm not sure why it's not letting me do this this evening. I've done it so many times.
That usually works great.
Yeah.
Well, what I was gonna say is if you can't bring it up, I mean, I'm I'm sure we can go through just the sort of PowerPoint overall and that'll work.
Yeah, I I can get it up. It's just what happens is it creates a full screen on my side. And so what I have to do is uh shrink everything down and it wasn't letting me doing that as well as normally. But I think I think I've got it set up now. I think my magic has worked. All right, can everybody see the full size?
That's it.
Perfect, cool. All right, apologies for that delay. Okay, uh, so thank you, Chair Taylor and members of the commission. And so this item is a lot line adjustment, a review between two parcels that are located at two forty-one and two eighty-one Georgia Lane. And so staff is just gonna start with a overview of the site and the existing parcels. And so the proposed lot of uh lot line adjustment intends to create an access point off Georgia Lane for parcel A, which is the green hash line, which is currently landlocked. Um, the subject parcels, so the uh parcel B, which is two eighty-one Georgia Lane, which is the red dotted line. Um, both of them are located within the RE one A zoning district. And so this this district does require a minimal parcel size of one acre. And staff just wants to note that parcel A is roughly one point zero one acres and parcel B is roughly four point two seven acres. Okay, and so in order to create an access point, a two thousand six hundred and twenty-five square foot panhandle, which is noted in the green hash line again, is proposed to be transferred from parcel B uh to parcel A to provide a driveway approach off of Georgia Lane. And so conversely, uh, the same amount of square footage is proposed to be transferred from parcel A to parcel B, which is this long skinny uh area with the blue dots, um, which is shifting the parcel A's property line, the northerly shared property line uh south. And so uh the resultant panhandle for the parcel A um complies with town code. Um, specifically, uh, there's section thirteen seventeen point three two point one hundred of the town code uh requires that the um parcel is um the parcel results in an access to an otherwise landlocked parcel without reducing the size of the parcel below the minimally required one acre size in the RE one A zoning district. And it's also twenty-five feet width and uh it's twenty-five feet in width, which is the minimum requirement for that code to accommodate uh things such as the access driveway, utilities, easements, paths and trails. And so just turning to public comments, uh, the town's announce notice on September the third to neighbors uh within that three hundred foot radius um regarding tonight's review by the planning commission. Uh, no public comments were received in advance of tonight's meeting. And so now turning to the um kind of the required findings for the lot line adjustment. So starting with the subdivision map act. Um, staff concludes that the project does comply with the requirements of the state subdivision map act. Um, as the adjustment is between two parcels, so less than four. There are no additional parcels, uh parcel creation is proposed, so no additional parcels are proposed to be created. Uh, the parcel will conform to the town zoning and building ordinances, uh particularly parcel A uh with setback requirements. And then staff is supporting the approval of the adjustment. And turning to town code required findings. Um, so these next three slides kind of hit on each section of the code as it relates to certain components of the project. Uh, this section, um, basically the both parcels are still compliant with the RA uh RE one A zoning district development standards. Uh, parcel A is still a one uh a one acre lot, so it meets that minimum one acre sizing. There aren't any significant changes to either the floor area maximums or the impervious surface maximums for either of the parcels. Um, the both parcels will will comply with required setbacks, particularly parcel A um with the panhandle and how we approach uh setback requirements. Um, and then the adjustment will be uh a condition is to require deed rec- recordation before any development can occur, particularly on parcel A. And so this section of the code uh relates to panhandle uh dimensions and standards. So the parcel A proposed panhandle is a twenty-five foot width. And so this provides development potential for otherwise landlocked parcel. Uh, the parcel does, parcel A still meets all of the RE one A zoning development standards that I mentioned previously. Um, any affected utilities or easements um will be handled. Um, the the intent of parcel A, the owner is intending to uh construct a new residence, so demolish and construct a new residence. So if there are any um any impacts, those will be handled through that development review process um with planning staff coordinating with the town engineer to ensure um those those uh impacts are not minimized or avoided altogether. And then staff just wanted to point out that the current landlocked parcel, um, it is considered a legal parcel, but if it were absent of this panhandle, it may potentially require a variance or an exception to development. And so that just ties into the last section of the um town code in in relation to lot line adjustments. Um, that one acre parcel size for both of them, which is adequate size um is the quoted language of that section, code section. Um, the panhandle provides development otherwise um for a landlocked parcel. So appropriate design is the quoted language of the that section. And then um finally, um, as noted in staff's report about the information, the the kind of the exercise originally with the two share, uh the two parcels owned by um, the owner of parcel A um and the impracticality and and feasibility of that. This adjustment is uh in staff's opinion, the most practical and feasible option to develop parcel A. And so with that, uh staff concludes that the project does conform to the town code and uh the subdivision map act. And it it is exempt from CEQA um per the listed section. And so staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt uh the draft resolution and attachment one and uh to approve the lot line adjustment permit. Um, and it's the resolution only has one recommended condition, which is the uh recordation or the deed, uh the recordation of the adjustment um must be um performed. So that's just the only condition that was applied to the um project itself. Um, so with that, this concludes staff's presentation and we're available for any questions.
So, commissioners, do you have any clarifying questions for staff? Go ahead, John.
Um, so actually, I had just one question on the lot that you didn't mention. Um, there's there's a, and it looks like it might even have the same owners, um, the one that's next to the the fire road. Um, does the uh, have we sort of made sure that there's no adverse consequences on that particular lot based on what's being proposed here?
Are you referring to parcel two, which is um owned by the same person? Um, I can pull up that the site, the site plan if you want.
So we know. I I just wanna make sure that that, you know, I'm not sure it actually matters from our decision perspective. But have we made sure that that particular lot is okay based on whatever we'd be approving here? So there's one to the left.
The one to the left, uh are you seeing my, the presenter's screen or the actual slide in full?
Slide info, yep.
Oh, slide info, so this screen, not this screen. This one is your?
Yep.
Yeah, we see a cursor.
Okay, so originally, when I met with the owners, um, in initial conversation, I'm just gonna pull everybody over here because I'm looking at this screen. Um, we had a discussion um about how to create access to this parcel. So if you know, there's a gravel driveway located here. And so that was kind of the initial, like, would that be feasible? The challenge um that we initially faced was this parcel and this parcel are just over one acre. And so there's a section of the code that requires any access easement that may be created, say hypothetically on this parcel, be deducted from this gross area. So that would be an adverse impact. Additionally, the only logical um way to get access would be to follow the path of the gravel drive. And so that would create another adverse impact where now you have a portion of the site that's almost dis- well, it's not almost, it's disconnected from, you know, this part is disconnected from this part, effectively reducing the size, uh setting aside the 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 acreage um access easement reduction I mentioned previously. So it would create an island parcel that just would not, it would create a worse situation than what's currently here.
Oh, actually, let me just interrupt there, Dylan. So, okay. I I was just wanting to make sure that people had thought about it and sort of guessed into the right conclusion. The owners knew what they were doing. Um, you know, so that we didn't end up going through this again in some future. Um, so it sounds like it's all been discussed. They know what they're doing and this is what they'd like to go ahead with. So that's fine. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, short answer is yes, correct.
I have a question or two. Um, on that, could you go back to that map on parcel A? How did it get laid out in the first place with no access? That seems weird to me that something's landlocked, truly landlocked.
Yeah, am I, am I muted?
No, you're, we hear you.
Oh, okay, good. Um, you know, that's a great question. Um, these parcels are rather old. Um, just for context, when I was in discussions with the uh land surveyor, um, we had a discussion about um how he was a, it was a challenge for him him to even find the location of the the monuments. And so I would surmise, um, in my professional experience with these, because the lot is so old, it may have just been created either by, sometimes they're created by uh probate. So one owner splits the lot between like, say, two children or inheritors. And or it could have just been a a fluke of what occurred. So by definition, it's considered a legal lot because it's 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 a parcel, it's identified on the, on a um on a parcel map, uh a recorded parcel map. So, you know, but it's a great question that I, we really weren't able to determine um through the grant deed reviews of how this occurred. Um, the owner may have more information than I do that was gathered since we've been discussing this and I can defer to Bruce, obviously. Um, but that's kind of my assessment was it may just have happened through um another mechanism, not necessarily uh through the subdivision map act or through the town.
Hmm, and is there a house on it right now?
There, there is a house on parcel A, correct.
So how do they drive to it?
They use that gravel driveway is my, is my understanding, the gravel drive.
So they have an informal, it's not really an easement because then it would, would it have taken away this or they'd have to redo this um. Oh, no, it could be an easement, but it's just taken away their um, not a formal easement.
Correct. It's it's just an informal, not necessarily an easement, it's just an informal driveway that perhaps was because the parcel two and parcel A or parcel parcel A in question were both owned by the same person prior. And they just, you know, there was just a um an agreement, an unofficial agreement between the two houses. Or they were owned by family members or whatnot. So it's not a formal access. It's just, um, and and I defer to the project, uh the property owner, if he has more information related to that.
Okay, thanks. That's all my questions.
Yeah, D- Dylan, um, you had a slide that just showed that property line moving a little bit. Is that to compensate for the twenty-five hundred square feet um there? I I I guess my question more succinctly is before and after, what's the um change in parcel A size?
Okay, uh, yes, and um is the, is this the map showing up that you were referencing?
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
Mm-hmm, um, and so I'll let the um Bruce elaborate if if needed on kind of the the reasoning or the kind of the discussions. But correct, the, it's an equal swap to create this panhandle. This area is the same area, um, twenty-six, twenty-five square feet. So it's just an agreement between the two owners to um not necessarily um increase one size at the detriment of the other.
Okay. Okay, that that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, so I had a couple of questions. Um, one, there improvements um proposed for Georgia Lane, because right now it's kind of a gravel slash dirt road, right? It's sort of loops back around towards Johnny Pass.
Um, there aren't any current improvements that I'm aware of. If there were any improvements, that may be uh if the development of the new residence, that could be subject to improvements of Georgia Lane. Um, my understanding is it is paved and there is um an access point, especially to two eighty-one. But that would be a determination that the um town uh public works or engineering department may um in place on that development project as 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 a condition of approval um to the applicant.
Okay, thanks. Um, and the other one, is there an expiration on the filing? So I mean, assuming we approve this tonight, um, what happens if they don't actually file the deed for three years? Is there any kind of expiration? Because I I've seen this before where people get a, get stuff, we get it all the way through the approval process. And then for whatever reason, it doesn't get filed and then somebody shows up three or four years later going, oh, but this was already approved. So I just wanna make sure we have something here where, you know, this, if it, if we approve it, this will just get done and not linger.
I see. Um, I, Laura, did you have any thoughts on that?
And we could certainly add a timeframe. I think that's a very good suggestion. We would just want to add it as a timeframe that says, or whatever is allowed by the subdivision map act, right? So we, because we can't preempt that, but I think we could certainly set a timeline on it, on whatever the planning commission thought was appropriate, a year, for example, something like that.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. All right, um, so does the owner applicant have any comments they wanna make?
Uh, hi, Bruce Love, Bruce Lovazano, how you doing?
Good, how are you tonight, Bruce? Welcome.
Uh, good. Thank you for all your time and everything. Um, so the, yeah, if you wanna put a date on when this deed gets done, that's no problem. I'll I'll follow through on it if that's who you were asking on the last question. And then uh The drive, Georgia Lane is fully paved all the way up to the the parcels. It's a fully paved driveway. In fact, I gotta notice that they're gonna re. Ask, they're gonna coated or asphalted again. I don't even know why. The street's really nice. So I'm just letting you know that. Fully paved. And, uh, you know, it's weird, I just bought the two lots and they're two separate parcels. Actually, my brother has one and I had one and we were gonna build our houses and live together. But next to each other, which is crazy because we've. After fifty years, we want to get away from each other. But anyway. So these two lots and and they're full parcels, but yeah, it's hard to access one from the other. And so I talked to Dylan. And we came up with this panel idea and then. Andrew Chase, the neighbor on the right, who has a lot of acres, we did it an exact lot exchange, you know, equal to equal. So it didn't change a lot sizes whatsoever because I didn't want to make any, I knew that could be an issue, which he's been very cool about and very nice guy. And he granted me that little corner because his lot kind of comes around my property. So he's got, it's kind of an odd shape, so it works out, but, uh. Anyway, um, yeah, I don't know if I want to say anymore, but I want to thank Dylan for all his help on this. Because I know it's been a lot of work for him. We work on this for six or seven or eight months and I have been rushing and I know we had the COVID and everybody's been all. You know, doing virtual, but he did do a lot of work for me and I appreciate it. And we did do all the plot maps and everything and tried to do everything, our due diligence to, you know, to make sure we conformed everything that told I was asking for.
Okay, great. Thank you, Bruce. All right. So with that, are there any public comments on either the staff report or on the applicant's comments? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Which commissioner would like to go first? And you, you're smiling.
I'm fine. Yeah, it seems like if the neighbors and the owners agree and the staff doesn't see any problem, then. Definitely fine with it.
Judith?
Seems fine. The only, um, and maybe I should have asked this before. Is since the driveway will now connect to the road, is there any other? Town rule that needs to be complied with because I know sometimes new connections to a road. Can require some other scrutiny, but I'm assuming you you've checked that and we're we're good, right?
Oh, yes. So what would happen is through if Bruce moves forward with the actual development of the parcel. The town Public Works and Engineering Department would issue what's called an encroachment permit. Especially if you're connecting to the right of way, which this parcel is weird because the the two eighty one Georgia Lane, the. Property line is the center line of Georgia Lane. So that's a very old common way of doing it. So they, the Public Works and Engineering would issue an encroachment permit. As the project is under construction, so that would be, we would be reviewing and approving the architectural review and site development permits. And then when they actually lay the asphalt for the driveway and then any utilities that they may underground or whatnot. In that panhandle, the, we would work with the engineering department in that encroachment permit. To ensure that there aren't any adverse impacts and all those other requirements that come up would be taken care of to town on standards.
Okay, so that's a future item that that will come back before you. Okay, thank you. No, I'm supportive. Now that I heard that.
Great, thank you, Jude. John?
I'm good.
Okay, um, yeah, so so I am as well. I mean, other than I'd like to see some kind of time limit put on the filing. And I'm happy with the year, I mean, or as you say, whatever is required by the subdivision map. And it sounded like from Bruce's comments that, you know, if this is approved tonight, he's ready to move forward on it anyway. So I think that's great. I just want to make sure that we don't have lingering approvals. All right, so. I'm sorry, say again, Ann.
I like time limits on things too. I I don't like it when things come back to us twenty years later and people like, yeah, I got this approval and we're like, what?
Yeah, exactly. So, okay, great. So with that, I would entertain a motion to pass the resolution.
I would move past the resolution on the lot line merger between two forty one and two eighty one. With the additional proviso that it be recorded within a year.
All right, thank you, John. A second?
A second.
All right, second for man. Laura, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Golden?
Aye.
Commissioner Haskell?
Aye.
Vice Chair Koffsel?
Aye.
Chair Taylor?
All right. All right, so the resolution passes unanimously. Bruce, good luck with your project. You know, we'll look forward to seeing you come back before the town with hopefully some new building plans.
Um, I want to thank you all very much. Thank you again. Again, I want to thank Dylan because he helped me a lot with this, you know, kind of babysat me through the process. Because I've never done a lot line adjustment. I'm just a guy built projects. So again, so yeah, and I'm I am moving forward. In fact. I think I have an ASRB meeting too, as far as the conceptual of the property in the next month or two, the house design. So we are moving forward.
Excellent.
Right.
And thank you again.
And as usual, staff, thank you. You know, thank you for your diligence and. I think, you know, one of the hallmarks of our town is that staff really makes an effort to help the residents. With their projects and clearly in this case, Dylan, you got pretty nice kudos from Bruce.
I appreciate that, Bruce. Thank you so much.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I was born and raised in Portola Valley in fifty nine. My dad lives here. My mom lived here before she passed away. My brother lives here. So we're a big Portola Valley fans.
Excellent. Thanks, Bruce. Good night. Okay, so that ends agenda item number two. Are there any commission reports?
So I attended the ASCC meeting this week. There is a project that will come before us, but not not at any particular time where we're going to have to. Have a look, but it, they're they're going back to the SEC, so I think. Let's have the more fulsome report when it goes back on the twenty seventh, which I'm also supposed to attend.
Continuity, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other, any other commission reports? All right, any public comment on the commission reports? All right, seeing none, let's move on to the next agenda item. So any staff reports? Laura, you got anything for us?
Yeah, one thing I wanted to note is we are reaching the end of our analysis of the Neely Winery project. And preparing to start to bring that forward for public meetings. And so the schedule is not confirmed yet, but we are talking about over the next month or two. To start to bring that forward to ASCC and Planning Commission. So I wanted to let you know.
Okay, great. Anything else?
And that's it.
All right, thank you. Any public comment on staff reports? We're down to three attendees. All right. So moving on then, um, the last item here is the. Approval of the minutes. So do we have any comments on the minutes before we move ahead, Judith?
Yeah, yeah, I have a couple. One is actually to me pretty funny if I'm right.
Hey Judy, would you mind if I interrupted just for a sec? Seems like somebody. But let me find out. And then we'll come back to the, just in case this was about the previous.
Yeah.
All right. So can you unmute Betsy, please? Betsy Morgan?
How do you do? Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I reached for the hand just at the end and. And it slipped into the next comments. I apologize for the lateness. I just wanted to clarify one thing. I too sat in on the ASCC meeting on Monday and Laura, I heard you say. The word definitely come to the ASCC in October. And so tonight you said in the next month or two is. Is it sliding or or is it definitely October? Thank you.
I'm sorry, are we, are you asking about the Neely Winery project?
Oh, excuse my, yeah, you're exactly right.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't recall what I said on Monday night at the ASCC meeting. So I'm sorry if I'm saying something different. That it's anticipated for ASCC in October, but it is not confirmed. And then it would come before this body, the planning commission after that. So that's what I meant by in the next couple of months.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay, so Judith, go ahead. Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to get the public comments sort of slotted in the right place.
Yeah, no worries. Red page one forty. The larger paragraph at the top, starting with Tim Chappelle. The last, second to last sentence there, due to the leach fields and changes to design. It's leach fields was L E A C H, I think, and and this particular visual was very upsetting.
My least favorite horror movie.
Then, uh. Farther down, the Commissioner Haskell restated that there are no redwood trees. I think I just, let's change that to ask the applicant to confirm there are no redwood trees. They're comfortable keeping. It just sounds odd that I was restating what was said. Last thing is the next page, one forty one. Commissioner Haskell at the top, appreciate the detailed explanation. I didn't want a precedent to be set, so that second sentence saying she explained a precedent may be set. By allowing twenty three out of twenty seven significant trees to be removed should. My recollection is I express concern that a precedent may be set. So it's an important emphasis for me. That's it for my comments.
Okay, thank you. John, do you have anything?
I was not at the meeting.
Okay. You could give it, so, and do you have anything?
Yes, a small one on page, red page one forty. The in the middle where it says Vice Chair Kopp still asked the applicant to explain the eight hundred thirty cubic yard of cut and fill and how that triggers the application. I know how it triggers. Can we put instead of the words and how, change that to since?
Take out and how and put in since, is that what you mean?
Yes. Thanks, that's all.
All right. Any other comments? All right. There any comments from the public or I bring this back to the commission? All right, so seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, second.
Second.
And second. Laura, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Golden?
I'm Lib State.
Commissioner Haskell?
Aye.
Vice Chair Koffsel?
Aye.
Chair Taylor?
Aye. All right, great, so. That ends tonight's meeting. I would obtain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that one.
Thank you, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, and thank you for the last two diehard attendees for joining the entire meet. I hope everybody has a great week or two. Take care.
Bye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.